Shaun, so you're taking one and seven, right?
I can't see the agenda yet.
Introduction of new employee and recreation.
I know nothing about number one.
Call him Bruce.
You can do that. I've got number seven.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council Work Session for Monday, June 18th. We'll give staff a little bit of time to get queued up here. Okay, first item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, Shaun Meskey.
All right, we have Jason Zwagerman, Building Inspector.
He's outside. Let me go.
Well, we'll introduce Jason when we get to, if you want to move on to the agenda.
Sure. Renaming Swanson Complex, Mr. Christensen.
I'm busy trying to get connected.
Go ahead and do it.
Say it again.
You want me to do it? It's introducing Swanson Field, Orange.
Jason's here.
Go ahead.
That we're doing. Let's introduce Jason.
Which one are we on, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we were gonna, we were gonna move forward. We didn't, we thought you might have to go downstairs. So, go ahead with the introduction of new employee, please.
Mayor Kellman, members of the council, we've recently hired Jason Zwagerman as our new Building Inspector. Jason comes to the city with a good construction background. He held his, he had his own construction company and most recently worked for a larger commercial construction firm here. So, we're happy to have Jason and we intend to get him fully educated and fully certified here in the near future. So, he's hit the ground running. He's been out in the field with Tom and Randy and is learning the new construction inspection and the rental side of things. We're glad to have him. Now, it's your turn to speak.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. It's a great pleasure to be here. Happy to work with the city. Hopefully, I can get comfortable and acclimated to the position. It's a lot to take in at first, but hopefully I can take it on pretty quick here and do some good work.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. We're trying to learn this new process on, we're supposed to be using the committee structure for the work sessions and I'm trying to hand it off and not try to take so much myself. So, normally I would have done a little bit more of that, but. So, you can stick around for the rest of the meeting if you want, or I'm sure Bruce told you, you can leave too. Most people leave as soon as they're done with the introduction. So, it's up to you whatever you choose to do, so.
It's just good to put a face to the name and welcome, welcome.
We're glad you're here. Next is renaming Swanson Complex, Orange Field to Elsie Clementson Memorial Field. Mr. Christensen, do you want to take care of that?
Well, I can take care of it, but I think we have a couple here to speak to it that would want to present it to us.
Sure. My name is Barry Strand from Wilmer. And so, back on June 4th, we presented some documentation and testimonials in regards to our request to have Orange Field named after Elsie Clementson. Reasons in that supporting documentation. So, I do have a copy of a proposed sign that we got from Printmasters, I believe. So, if you want to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Pass that around and take a look at it. So, we've got some quotes on that. We'll be raising funds independently to pay for that. And we've gotten some good support from alumni and former players and people who knew Elsie. So, that coupled with past presentation of information, I guess we're here to answer any questions that you might have and go from there.
Anybody got questions?
Just a question on the timing. If I understand correctly, if we move it to the agenda tonight and approve it, you would then try to do that yet this summer? Is that correct?
Yeah, July 13th is a date that the sign company is committed to having that sign ready for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie.
Nope, I got it. At some point, I thought I had read that it was gonna go in the outfield, but now I'm seeing it saying just, right just inside the ballpark gate.
Anybody else have a question? Oh, Kathy.
I appreciate the sign. Have we worked with the city in regard to creating that sign? So, it has a common look with some of the other signs that we have around, around the community?
I don't know if we've done that. We'd be happy to do so. Maybe Rand can speak to that.
Rand Middleton, Wilmer. I did go out and speak with Gary Manzer and he showed us the city composite signs, the type that is going up at the Splash Plaza. That sign, which has outstanding durability, I understand, priced out at over $2,300. And this aluminum sign, which is very popular and used on a lot of, in a lot of locations and outfield fences, priced out at 800 and some dollars. But as far as the style, I couldn't say.
Thank you.
Is the cost a major factor then? I mean, is that what you're saying? I mean, it's...
Well, it's somewhat of a factor, yes.
Since it's being donated by...
By friends of Elsie, I would say.
Okay. Go ahead, Kathy.
I would just speak in favor of this. In speaking with different community members, Elsie certainly has been an incredible factor in our community over a number of years and not just a small number of years. What is it, total of like 40 years or something like that? I appreciate the letters that were submitted and, and I think that this is a good thing. I was a little bit concerned when I thought we were changing the whole Swanson Field name, but I appreciate it that it is one field and not the entire field. I think it's a very appropriate thing to do and a nice way to honor someone who has really given his life to, to children, to our kids. Shaped, he shaped people's character and future.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would recommend the, move it to the council meeting after this and bring it up for approval.
Would you like them to stick around or, can you guys stick around if we move that forward to the, on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the Invest in Wilmer presentation. Mr. Christensen, are you taking that one as well?
I don't think I am, but we have several here that...
No, I... I think I'll just do a brief introduction of it. The Invest in Wilmer presentation, a group of community-minded individuals started working on the possibility of a local ops and sales tax for the city of Wilmer. I have met with them a couple of different times and I think I've received literally probably 50 or more emails from Mr. Dawson. He's a very good communicator. When he has something on his mind, he sends it, which is a good thing. And then you can regurgitate that and do with it what you wish, I think is kind of how he usually says, "Take this for information." So, first off, I just want to thank you as community leaders of coming to the table and saying, "We want to make a difference in our community." And you have a couple plans in front of us for us to look at. And my understanding is you would potentially then, based on the conversation today, potentially bring that back to the council meeting next in two weeks, correct?
Yeah, that's what we are thinking, yes. Yeah.
Sounds good. So, I know you have a, you have a PowerPoint presentation, so we'll go ahead and I'll stop talking. You guys can start talking.
I did email the PowerPoint to everyone. I don't know if you guys have it. Otherwise, I didn't mail you guys all a copy as well.
I have that as well.
Okay. So, well, thanks for having us.
Just a minute.
We were told that that was going to be available on the screen so that the community could see it, is it not?
Judy's saying that the screen's not working right now. But yes, that was their plan.
Did we check all that out before the meeting started?
Yes. I did not check the system here. Cody loaded this up. Where's Cody?
Is it more for the community or do you guys need a copy?
Yeah, it's more for the community. Normally, we like to have it out there so that people can see what's going on, so.
Okay.
This is just the agenda, not the attachments.
It was not uploaded.
What?
It was not uploaded on the jump drive. You don't see it listed as the options that are on here.
Holland, who's supposed to do this? I mean, this is a second meeting in a row we haven't had this done. I mean, whose responsibility is this?
This is a combination of the clerk and IT work together to get this to happen.
Well, we, we have it.
Okay, you, okay. Yeah, we can, we, they're gonna try to email it here.
Cody, it's on the city's website. So, if you go to the city website, capture it off the city website. It's on the attachments. All you, capture it from the attachments. It's there. I reviewed it over the weekend. Matt, if you want to go ahead with the narrative, possibly?
First of all...
First off, let me apologize. I thought I'd made myself clear that we needed to make sure and check that this is working and I guess...
No, that's fine. I think I've met everybody here, but I'm Matt Dawson and live at 10-10 Meadow Lane. Tony M. and John Cole, those three have been working actually for the last probably three years on and off on some different things here. First of all, I want to thank the city council and the staff for all the hard work and all the great things that are happening in our community. And your families as well for, for all that you do. Truly appreciate all the work that you do. We do believe there's a lot of great things going on in our community. The reason we're here tonight, I guess basically, is just some different topics that we'll, we'll go through here. I was actually in the real estate business in Minneapolis from 1994 to 2007. And the one thing that was always interesting is there was always a few communities. There was a couple of them in particular where I would be working with a couple or an individual and they'd say, "I'm gonna live in this community" and, and we'd go look at property there. And then basically what would happen is I would say, "Well, there's some comparable suburbs. Would you like to take a look at a few of those?" And they said, "No, that's where I'm gonna live. I grew up there. I went to school there. And I'm gonna raise my family there. My kids are gonna go to school there as well." And it was really interesting because there was a couple of them every year. And what it really came back to is the school systems were very, very strong and those communities continued to upgrade, reinvest and, and did a great job to make it exciting for families to come back into those communities. I think that there's a lot of great things happening in Wilmer and I think our school systems are phenomenal. Ridgewater, CCS, Wilmer Public Schools are just fantastic in our community. And I believe that we, we have a lot of great things happening. One of the reasons we're here and tonight, I think, is more of, really us three are kind of looking for partnerships from all of you and just to see what you guys' thoughts are. You guys obviously know what we're thinking because we sent it, we mailed it, and you guys all have some ideas, I'm sure. And that's really what we're looking for. What are your thoughts? We certainly want to know and we'd want to partner up if we continue to take another step. The feedback's been positive to continue to go down this road. So, the idea here obviously is to attract, recruit, retain, and try to continue to be competitive with some of the other outstate communities. With technology nowadays, you can live anywhere. I could live 100 miles away from Wilmer and I would just have to send the mailing, my address, to wherever the company that I work for. So, if you flip to the next page, let's see, sorry, just the button.
You just tab down.
So, basically, this is a Wilmer recreational center. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about this and you guys have heard us and read through this, I'm sure. But basically, this would be kind of like the Park and Rec Center or it would be like the New City Auditorium. One thing we don't want to do is get too caught up in the details, but we certainly want to have some big, some concepts here tonight and get some feedback from all of you. But I really believe, and Tony and John believe, that it's critical that the city invest in recreation. I, I really believe that that reaches all kids. There's a little bit of concern right now, just moving forward, but we're certainly confident that we'll get the right person to hire as the director and move forward. But we really, really believe that our facilities are critical to our community and to attract and retain. There's just a lot of kids that are never going to play, able to play boosters, baseball, or traveling hockey. And basically, we really obviously feel that this is important. So, these are some of the ideas that we put together, obviously, you know, indoor tennis. Obviously, that's a lot of space. But pickleball is actually growing in many communities, especially in the warmer communities. We'd want it to be a multipurpose space. Our idea is here to seat maybe 1,500 in case we did need, you know, want to have a graduation or a concert or a program. One of the things we don't want to do is we don't want to duplicate anything in our area. So, obviously, if that actually, we don't believe that that would, but we'd certainly want to coordinate with, with the booster clubs, the schools, the Y and all that stuff. These are some of the ideas that basically have on this, this facility and expanding it off the back of the Cardinal Arena as well. The idea with the outdoor covered refrigerator rink, I called Grand Rapids, Minnesota, which is kind of a fascinating community because it's actually a little bit smaller than Wilmer, but they have just an unbelievable skating, hockey program up there. But they added a outdoor refrigerator rink with a big cover over it. And what they do up there basically is, you know, they, when you have barns peels and you have figure skating shows, you have tournaments, it gives you that extra outdoor sheet where kids can come and, and play and skate, just learning. We also feel it would be a community builder where, you know, we'd really like more of an opportunity to have some of our, our minority families have a chance to learn how to skate. And as much as we work our tails off, you guys could all go to Garfield, the basement. We have skates lined up there. They're all donated. But it's, it's tough and out there. But, so if we had an outdoor refrigerator rink, it'd be another, another option. But then obviously you could use it for pickleball. You could have shows. If we had an egg show or something, you could take some things down. It would be a multipurpose kind of a, of an area as well off the north side of the Civic Center. Any questions on, on the recreational or the auditorium type of a facility that we have here? Just want to kind of hear again from, from you guys as well, your thoughts, comments.
Matt, if I remember the drawings, it's, it, this, it was actually on the one and you said, and maybe you're coming to that, would tie the facilities together if I remember correctly too, or not?
Yeah, so, the PDF is not on here, but you guys have a picture of the PDF, basically. So, on the, basically, the first page on the PDF, if you look and you were to expand, this, this came off of the, this came off of the, obviously, from the consultant. If the, if the plan in yellow, I guess, if that was the auditorium, okay, and then the blue area there would be the outdoor covered refrigerated rink with, with some space off the back. But the gray area is the Cardinal Arena. The green is the curling, or I'm sorry, that's the Blue Line Arena. So, those are, if you go to that, that number one, the drawing that we have there. So, the idea off the back, the north side of the Cardinal Arena, if they added locker rooms off the back of there, and then basically that would tie into the, the auditorium or the facility there. And then it would also be off the back for the outdoor refrigerated rink area as well. So, our whole goal here is obviously everything to be as multipurpose as possible. So, that would basically be the, the rec center that we, that we have. Okay. Then, basically, we move over to the recreational fields. So, basically, what we would do is, we would expand, obviously, to the north. And that would be drawing number two on the PDF that you guys have or the, the drawing. And that's what that looks like off the back that they drew up and that we kind of came back with. Put some dollars to that as well. So, you'll see the, the community track, obviously with the bubble, that's to the, that's B. Then A would be a turf field. So, a lot of what we're doing here with the field space is we're trying to actually expand and work with the soccer community that's growing. Obviously, you could play many different things on there as far as football, baseball and whatnot. And then there'd be a soccer field up to the north of that as well. That's the Wilmer Civic Center Master Plan Number Two on the drawing. And that, that's all north of the Civic Center. If you turn to the, the number three, that's the south field. So, that's that piece of land as you pull in and you kind of drive around to one side or the other. Here's the idea with this that we have is, and again, this came from, from the consultant as well, is if we put four fields there, they could be used for little kids' baseball, girls' softball, but then you could also put some nets in there for soccer as well. I don't know of a, a good soccer field in the city of Wilmer that is used. I, from what we have been told, that we obviously have a growing soccer community and we're working with them a little bit on some of this as well. But that would obviously be an opportunity to put some nets in there as well. It could also be used for baseball, softball and soccer.
Matt, do you, are these drawn out to Councilmember Fagerley's question two weeks ago? Are these drawn out for ba, for baseball, softball, fast pitch? What are they drawn out to?
So, I believe that these out in the front are actually not for like city league adult softball. These would be more for girls' softball, fast pitch, and then little kids' baseball fields. So, they also wouldn't be for like baseball, high school or Rails baseball.
So, you're still planning on keeping that at Swanson Field?
Yeah, that wouldn't change. We wouldn't propose anything different there, so. So, and then we move, any questions on, on any of, of the details on the slides here or the information that we're presenting?
Could you go back to one, please? Oh, did you already take that off? Okay.
Tony Ammon, if I could clarify. So, the reason to move the softball fields in front of the Civic Center is because those new turf fields would take up where the existing three fields are between the Civic Center and the high school. And this, we already, the city already hosts, all, girls' softball is hosted at that complex. They don't use Swanson. And if you guys were around the last weekend or the, the weekend before when we host that 70-team youth baseball tournament, they need every field in town. And, you know, those can be, you know, the variable widths to, or the lengths to first base. So, in answer to your question, I think, Mr. Fagerley, I think there'll probably at least be a 200-foot fence, if maybe a 220, you know?
220 would be...
It'd be better for, for baseball, yep.
Because they were hitting them out. The 10-year-olds and elevens, elevens were hitting them out at this school last weekend.
Right. So, a 220 is, you know, a pretty good size for fast pitch. But, you know, this is for the kids too, so that, that would be appropriate. So, thank you.
Put up slide one again. Cody, can you, can you go in on slide one there for him?
Okay.
Slide it up. Matt, could you screen? Put number one up.
Okay. So, my question would be on the, the, on the rec center, is that, that's supposed to be connected to everything else?
The yellow part would be kind of that auditorium rec center that we would like that to be potentially connected to that back part of that gray area, which is the Cardinal Arena, because you could run the locker rooms on the back of the Cardinal Arena and then it could tie into the rec center. But then it would also, what we'd really like, obviously, above that, there'd be meeting rooms and maybe potentially some viewing area over the Cardinal Arena on the ice, but then the, you could look over on the outside rink as well. But on the main level, you would have locker rooms that would tie into the back of the Cardinal. They'd be accessible for that blue area, which is the outdoor refrigerated area, or like I said, in the summer, if you used it for something else, but then tie into that Cardinal Rec Center area or that auditorium center.
So, accessibility, you're going way out on the right side of that building or you're having to go through the arena?
So, I think what they drew up here is I believe that would be another entrance coming in to the east side of the Cardinal Arena that would go into that yellow area. So, I do think you'd have another entrance there, I believe. I don't think you'd walk through the ice arena to get to the rec center.
Right. I was just, I was just thinking ahead to other possibilities. And if, if the, if the rec center would become part of the community center, the accessibility there is, isn't very good for the seniors.
Yep. Yep. I mean, they would probably have to do some kind of parking or something over there on the east side as well. So, okay. Any other questions?
What is...
So, as we go on to the next slide here, Parks, basically, the Parks slide here is what we have. And basically, we thought through and we kind of, this has kind of evolved. Obviously, we started when we heard that there was a consultant hired on the Civic Center. We started there and we wanted to reach out. And we've spoke with Robins Island Groups. We've spoke with the Swanson Regional Park Group. We visited with the Curling Group and they decided that they wanted to do their own program. We've visited with, even reached out to a couple of people that I'm friends with, the 2040s or anything out there. You know, we want to see if we can invest in our community. And you go into some of the other communities and see some of the facilities. And, and this is what we came back with is basically with Robins Island. This information obviously came from the representatives of those groups of what they would want. And certainly, all of this is flexible. Again, tonight, we're looking, we're looking for feedback and we're trying to get ideas here and try to fine tune this. So, that's basically the feedback from Robins Island on their budget, what they would want, what they would need. And then the Swanson Regional Park is the, what basically, where we came up with those figures as well. The stormwater, I, I respect and appreciate, we visited with some different people and a lot of them mentioned, you know, "How can we possibly upgrade some of these things when we have so many challenges with stormwater?" And so, it's one of those things that we're, we're, we're looking to, to you guys from your experience and on what you guys think for stormwater and streets and, and where we're at here on a couple of different figures there to help fund this and see if we can make some progress and get ahead of it. Seems like that's obviously a topic that continues to come up. Obviously, we're interested in adding that if that helps move things forward and helps fund our community. We, what we want, big picture wise, what we're looking for is to invest in our community, to help attract, recruit, retain. And, and I think we, we want people to come and build homes and buy homes and develop the land and continue to grow, become a true regional center. So, I believe the stormwater, from what I've heard, Tony and John have heard, that we really obviously need to... that we really, obviously, need to consider putting this in and seeing if we can make some progress there. Anybody have any comments or feedback on the stormwater or the parks?
Matt, if you would go back to the Swanson Regional Park. Did you guys work with the park plan that was adopted for the, like, the drawings that, of how to redo those softball fields and, or redo those fields? Or is this specific to any piece of that?
Yeah, I mean, the park plan I'm familiar with, was involved with, with being on the advisory board. And so we did look at some of the details and we did get some feedback on the things that are left for Swanson Regional Park. And then the people, obviously, that are involved there, we contacted them and said, you know, what's left there? What do we need to move that forward? So we could, so that is from the plan.
I don't remember the figures that were in the park plan for that area, not on Baker, but on the other side there. But I was just curious about that, if that's where you had come up with this information.
Yeah, and it was, it was it was basically off of the plan and then also from a couple of people that I have spoken with on that, so. This is what we put together, a couple ideas here. Obviously, in 1997 or 1998, I don't doubt that $4.5 million for the library in downtown Wilmer was probably a big number. But I'm thankful every day that we have that. I use the library and I don't think anybody's ever mentioned. I wish we would have done it for 2.9. Maybe they have, but I doubt it. It is built. One thing I love about the Civic Center, I love about the auditorium and I love about the library is when you guys or when the city council members did move forward. I know Councilman Christensen would have been involved. They did those very well. We're not looking for a lean to or to bump something out or slap something on. We're looking for a commitment here to really move the community forward and see if we could, obviously, expand and use this as a tool to, obviously, invest in our community. So these are a couple of funding ideas that we're interested in hearing what you guys think. The last thing we want to do is go out there and campaign against council members. I mean, we're looking for eight people and the mayor to be on board here. And we're flexible. We're here right now to try to see what you guys think and try to get some information to decide, do we come back in two weeks? So these are a couple of ideas, if anybody has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Matt, for being here tonight and for presenting this information. I remember the last process that we went through investigating and exploring different ideas for local option sales tax. And I kind of feel like that was a little backwards. And I think that's maybe why we, well, I personally believe that's why we kind of failed to execute there. I like, I like coming at it from this approach. I like a community-based approach where something is, the ideas are brought to us and we have, you know, different variables and details and there's all kinds of stuff that can get worked out with. But I think it's the right direction as opposed to having council members sitting and deciding, you know, whether or not we should have a local option sales tax. And then if we should or not, then try to find projects. Because there's always stuff that needs to be done. But if there's a concerted effort from the community side and especially a group that kind of organically coalesces around an idea and brings it to us, it gives us the opportunity to sit down, take a look at the details, try get behind the idea first and then start working out the different aspects of the idea and maybe fine-tuning it. And that allows us the opportunity to determine, hey, is this something that we can not only get behind as a council in terms of leadership and the city, but then also I think it's a better, more well-rounded product for the community to get behind? And then it's in the community's hands to vote on, whether or not it's something that the community wants. And I just, I appreciate your time and efforts and I like going about it this way as opposed to the way that we have in the past. And I think it's going to be more productive this direction. And so far, I like what I'm seeing because it's nothing too specific, but we get the general idea right away. And we know, okay, you know, is this something in general that we want to go for or not? And then we can, we can get, you know, we can ferret out the details as we move along. So thus far, I like what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean first.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. And I think Councilmember Plomin is right on the mark, given the history of how things have gone last couple of years. It's nice to have a clear plan that you have some champions that are behind them. I think these are congruent with the council's priorities. There are certain things perhaps I personally would not necessarily think is a great idea, but it's not for me to decide. And we want the public to decide that. And at least as far as for my litmus test, you have the projects listed here with some price tags on it. I think you've done an excellent job with the recreation center and the fields. We probably got to help you with the parks and stormwater to put some flesh on those bones. But I think that this is definitely aligns with what the council's talked about. And I feel a lot more comfortable with this going to voters in the fall than I've seen before, so. Thank you.
Julie, go ahead.
Okay. I'll repeat what they've said. Truly appreciate all the time you guys have put into this. This is, this is a, this is a good plan. And I do also support it going to the voters to see if they, this is something that they want to invest in and have the, just like what you explained, the, to be able to recruit and retain and to get people to move and stay in Wilmer. My concern is still with that rec center part. And how, because we're in the middle of the whole community center and you, a lot of your, a lot of the people who are going to vote are going to be senior citizens, taxpayers. And there is, there is a large faction of them that don't want it to be that far out there. And one of the things they talk about that they like with the new, with the one that they have is the accessibility. It has the drive-up. It has parking right by the front door. And if we were able to work that into this design and the rec center being the community center, I guess I just envisioned it more on the east side of the parking lot, that there would be a drive-up and there would be accessibility for whether it's anybody with a handicap or with, or a senior citizen with mobility issues. That just is a long way off for me. I mean, already, to get to that front door of the Civic Center can be a long way. Even with somebody who has COPD and you have to hold your breath to be able to get to a front door, long way to the senior high front door, long way to these doors. You just, you need more accessibility. And not to say that the community center would be there, but a lot of what you are putting into, thinking of putting into the rec center, I feel is what we would be considering would go into a community center. And I just would hope that we would have a little bit more collaboration on that concept. But the fields, the parks, Swanson, Robins Island, love all that and the stormwater. Should be able to address some of those issues with the local option sales tax, totally on board. But the rec center part is what I have concerns about.
That's, thank you. That's good feedback. I appreciate that. We will take some notes and keep working on that part.
Councilmember Fernando Alvarado.
Thank you for your presentation.
I've been doing first names and last names both. I'll go back to last names.
Not a problem.
It works better.
I know who you're talking to. Again, great. I appreciate your work. What I like are some of your emails that, your 615, where you have an attachment to show what the process is to get the sales tax to the public. And you kind of walk through that. I think that was important for me to see. It's not just, you know, glitz and glitter. You're showing that, hey, this has to be done. I like that. I like the idea that the places that currently have imposed local sales tax and some of the programs that they're doing, it shows a wide diversity of things going on. And I think that's important for the people to see. And it goes from Minneapolis down to Albert Lee. So it's a wide variety. So I'm pretty excited about that. I'm on board. I like the idea that we're going to be giving something to the community that they can get excited about. I'm very excited about the prospect of this coming to town. And I'm excited about you guys taking the bull by the horns. And that's very exciting. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and energy on this. This is the right way to go about it. The other two local option sales taxes, the community or a group came to us. We approved it to put it on the ballot. That's what has to be done. You know, it's unfortunate that we have to spend that kind of money on recreation programs now, but that's the way it is. You know, having grandsons and we're traveling now. You go to Monticello, Buffalo, Sartell, we're falling behind. This is needed and hopefully we come up with the right options so the people can vote on it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson followed by Schwantis followed by Ossimus.
I think Kathy was before me, but that's all right. I have two questions, Matt. The drawings that I've seen, to me, the rec center for our community is still different than the community center. And I said, I still don't know what we want when we talk about a senior center or those, you know, what incorporates. But I'm supportive of the rec center concept from, you know, how you've brought it forward. But I think we need to have a conversation here with, you know, is it a rec center? Is it going to replace the community center? The needs of the senior population or the community access to some of the things that are going on at the community center now is certainly different than things that would be going on at the rec center. So I'm supportive of the rec center concept, you know, moving that forward from that standpoint. But I guess I'm curious what other people around the table here think about that one. Second part is, how specific do we need to be? Have you talked to our representatives when it has to be approved by the state? And so I know we don't want to be specific, you know, in total detail. But it's my understanding from looking at some of the other ones that other communities have gotten approved, that there has to be a certain amount of detail in there with what we're going to do. So have you guys researched that with what, if we take it to a ballot, what will we need to bring to the legislature in order for it to be approved? How much detail?
Well, I guess I made a couple of phone calls and talked to a few people about it. And I don't, it's my understanding, I have emailed Representative Baker a couple of times and kept him looped in on the same emails you guys are getting and information. And I haven't specifically had anything back that says you need to be more specific. It's my understanding that the last one on the library, that there wasn't even a drawing on a napkin and it got through. Times have changed, obviously, and we can't do that anymore. But we certainly, obviously, you guys, we hired an architect to put some general ideas. I don't know the answer as far as how detailed the legislature is going to get, but I can certainly, certainly talk to and find out.
I have talked with Representative Baker about that and also Senator Lang. And conceptually, what you have together at this point, if it passes, then you can hang the meat on the bone. But they're, both have told me they're willing to carry what the community wants. They're not going to carry something the community doesn't want. You know, I think that's the same thing that we want to do. We want to carry what the community wants. So I think back, early on, it was easier to get approved in concept. Then they went through kind of a, you have to have it all detailed. Kind of that's what happened with our civic center plan. Then they've laxed off of that more. I think the one that Councilmember Johnson referenced in Hutchinson, they just said they were going to do utility work. And, I mean, that's basically what it was. And it passed. And it passed the legislature. So from what Representative Baker and Senator Lang have told me is that if we have something that comes to them, they will carry it. But they need to understand it. And my last conversation was that the public policy and Representative Baker there was very clear that he understood what we're doing. So at that meeting, so, Councilmember Schwantis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo everyone else, not to be redundant, but we recognize the time and effort that everyone has put into this and want to thank you for that. I agree with the concept of the three areas that you've identified with the Civic Center and the parks and the stormwater. But I would remind the council that we've not yet accepted the 292 consultants study. And there are some items that are referenced in here. As an example, the covered outdoor refrigerated ice arena. We have on two occasions declined having a third ice plant capabilities. And so I agree with this in concept and in theory, but I think that there are items that we need to have, you know, further discussion about.
Councilmember Ossimus.
Okay, one thing that we haven't talked about or addressed, and I would want to know from staff, is what does this do for staffing and the additional buildings and the additional fields? And what would be the ripple effect for the cost to the city?
Mr. Holland, do you want to try to address that?
Well, we haven't formally went through the projects and identified how many additional employees. Obviously, right now, we're in the process and we're going to talk about tonight, you know, our new parks department. And so it would greatly expand our parks department and the number of facilities that we have. Also, we'd have to try to incorporate what kind of revenue flows that we would get in to cover some of those maintenance costs and long-term costs. And I think once we start doing a formal proposal on some of these facilities, that's certainly a part of the equation that the council needs to consider is that operating cost.
Councilmember else?
Just indicating, some of the things that you're proposing are actually fields that the school would be using.
Correct.
And so I'm just curious about the communication with the school. You know, are they interested in a new football stadium and in a new, you know, those types of things versus, you know, with that? And so would there be any kind of things to work through, you know, with where the current things are? And would the school be willing to do that? Because obviously, we'd be contracting somehow. I mean, who's going to own it? Who's going to operate it? Who's going to use it? You know, those kinds of things. But it would be the city that's looking at the local option sales tax.
Couple of thoughts, I guess, on that. One would be, at the Civic Center, it's about six months out of the year where there's somebody out there till 11 o'clock almost every night. And there's staff out there. And then obviously, if community and rec now, you know, if it becomes park and rec and the director, I'm not saying they have to staff out there, but hopefully that would, the people that would program would be out there. We'd have one central park and rec center with, like I said, with an auditorium, the fields and everything. It'd be one location, I think, that would be just an incredible service to the community and people, bringing people together and all that. So I do think that, you know, some of the people over at Jefferson that program and run those could potentially be out there, hopefully. Again, that's just an idea. I'm not telling you that you should do that, but that's a thought. The question that you have is true. Obviously, there's some land there. And so what we did is we have met with the committee, the Building and Grounds Committee of the school board. So there was a few people there with Dr. Holm. And the reception that they've got, obviously, was that they didn't see any issues. Obviously, we're not looking at moving the stadium out there. We're just talking turf fields for soccer. So you've got recreation and you've got, certainly, all the schools would benefit as well a little bit there, too, for after-school stuff. They had mentioned the feedback that we got from the Building and Grounds Committee was positive and receptive. We would probably go potentially Monday to their, to try to get on their agenda and just say, would you guys be okay if the city were to buy that land for a dollar? And contingent upon this passing is what our thinking would be on that, so. We like, obviously, the city to be involved in recreation and the city to own facilities because we, our Public Works Department and with all of you guys, it opens it up to everybody. It's more difficult if things are run through the school. It's just harder to access. difficult if things are run through the school. It's just harder to access that. So. And with the shelters at the neighborhoods, I just think those, you know, that those days are, are not what they used to be. So at the individual neighborhoods.
Councilmember Melsky.
I think it does, the plan here does delineate between a recreation center and a community center. I, I don't think those are the same concepts. And as a council, we've talked about some of this stuff in the past of, do we try to consolidate certain buildings? And I think in our last meeting, we decided maybe City Hall should not be with a community center. And if we go forward with this, it would be pretty clear that perhaps a recreation center might not go with a community center either. And so, not that this should do this, but this feedback would be perhaps explore, we did a building study of what it would take to do renovation of buildings. The existing community center has certain things that has to be done to that if it were to maintain its current location and similar type of programming, that you may want to explore what kind of dollars would be tied to that to bring that in, to alleviate the fear that we would have diminished access for seniors and so on, that these things would be maintained, perhaps even in their own, their current location. But the location thing is still an item up for discussion with the council, but my opinion would be to maybe explore what those dollars might look like if they could be somehow incorporated in here.
Thank you. And we think, obviously, that, you know, connecting to Robins Island with trails and the golf course, Midwest, and just, it's just a central, great location, obviously, that we're with the staff and with, I think I've mentioned it, that we just don't see standalone ice arenas anymore. You could call any of them in the Lancer Park and Rec Center, every single one of them. Rochester, down in the cities, they've all redeveloped and repurposed ice arenas. And, and to be honest with you, it's, it, it will help all the programs. You know, just being honest with you, hey, a little kid over here is playing baseball, you want to try skating? How about you come over and try soccer? How about you, and hopefully, they can all grow, build community, the families can get together, you know, kind of what the city auditorium was. But, but hopefully, they can help each other because you need them. It wasn't that long ago, five, six, seven years ago, our, our numbers were down out at the ice arena. And it got to a point where you could almost have justified not putting ice on. If you don't have ice in Wilmer, you have a lot of people no longer living in Wilmer. You have a lot of people that no longer consider living in Wilmer as you move forward. So it's an unbelievable asset. And of course, all these other programs centralizing it, we, we think would be just a, a great benefit for all of them.
Matt, I as well would like to just compliment you. The thing that I really like about the committee that you have working, the three of you, is that when a new idea comes up, you don't say no. You say, let's look and see if we can explore that as well. I know that you guys got thrown a curveball here a couple of weeks ago with the taking a look at a performing arts center. And that came out of the Chamber Public Policy Committee, where that conversation was talked about. And when I sent you the information and you made the contacts immediately, you got on top of it. So you're responsive to what the community is asking for. And we should, that's, that's how the council is supposed to work. That's how we, as a city, are supposed to work, is that when the committee, community asks us for something, we're supposed to go and say, how can we make that happen? We're not supposed to say no. So thank you for your positive attitude. Thank you for your energy on this. And I know you really haven't talked a little bit about the Invest in Wilmer Committee structure yet, and not sure if you wanted to touch on that just briefly. Councilmember Nelson just pointed it over to me and said, so I just want to point that out to you. But thank you for the three of you for getting the work done and coming to us. And I know that, I wish that our Finance Director was here so we'd talk about what those numbers were. But when I had met with him, he thought that the numbers may be above the two and a half million. But I think it's best to think on the conservative side rather than the aggressive side. And if more money comes in, you can just retire it earlier.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Invest in Wilmer, the committee. So obviously, there's a lot of questions. And even John and I and Tony don't 100% agree on every single thing. This would be the committee, obviously, that we would go to, that we would want to set up. Us three are more than willing to be involved on that. And basically, this would be the, the committee that makes the decisions. I, I just, you know, a lot of us, I mean, we could spend the next two years and have the absolute perfect plan. And the economy or the voters vote, no. I, I just, and to spend more money and time, we want to know, does the community want this? Then, it's going to be almost a year probably before funding. This would be the structure we'd want. We'd want to work with the council, the staff, and obviously grab some community members that have. We have a list of people that said, just as soon as you need help or you're interested, or tell me where, where I can help, that are super excited about, about this project. So again, and it, and it's not me, it's not just John and Tony, we're just the, the people here tonight. There's a lot of people behind us and that are excited about it. So that, that would be the structure that we put together. Same thing, we're, we're open. If somebody here sees that this should be set up a little different, that's, that's fine. The Minnesota State Sales Tax, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this, but, but basically, I mean, I put this together, it's been a very interesting project. Obviously, Pennington County and the city of Minneapolis, that's how they've built their facilities down there. They do it because they want to have things going on, and, and that's what we want here as a regional center. Candy Island County, as you all know, I talked to a couple of commissioners, and they said three to four years is what they project, depending on when their projects are done. They're timed at four projects, I believe. So in a couple, hopefully, three, four years, their half would go away. Today, so right now, today, we're at 7.375. So those are just some basic, basic, obvious examples there of, of some things that you guys are all aware of. When I go back to the, the next slide, these are some of the other communities. And I've mentioned before, obviously, we've, when we're there, you guys can look these up yourselves. These are the ones that we have. There's, they're taking in a little bit more when we all go visit them. And, and I only think it's fair that we collect a little bit. Our research shows about 50% of the revenue would come in from people that travel into our community at tourism and things like that for tournaments and baseball tournaments. And, you know, I, I call Beth Fisher every year because we have to host four tournaments, hockey tournaments, and I can only get about five tournaments. I mean, there, there's a lot of people coming in this community that you don't know. There's a lot going on, which is a great thing. So. Property tax versus sales tax, obviously, I put that example together. I put this example together for my three good friends that own property on First Street, and we like to have conversations. And this is the conversation that we have when I visit with them. So obviously, we, we believe that it will take some, some pressure on property tax. And obviously, we all know that the commercial real estate owners, city of Wilmer paying a lot of the bills. We believe this is a benefit to them. So. And then the last one, basically, like I said, to summarize, this is the schedule, the notes that we got from staff on, on where we're at below, Tony, myself, and John's contact info. And obviously, we appreciate the time tonight. I don't know what, what else, if there's anything else you guys have, but this has been really good feedback. Any, anything else you can help us with? Because we will certainly take notes, and we have taken notes and taken back and, and go back through it again. And we're, we're open for phone calls and emails as well.
Matt, thank you for your time. I think from what I, what I've heard from the council, what I see from the council, would like to invite you back, Mr. Holland, if we can get them on the agenda for the next meeting. And we can talk about that. And so that'd be great. So thank you guys for your presentation.
Great, thank you.
Even the silent, too. So we, we know Matt talks a lot. So, exactly. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Next, is there anybody from the public that wishes to make any comments? Okay, next is financing of additional stub streets. Mr. Christensen, you taking that?
The other Mr. Christensen, well. I can, Mayor, members of the council, or I can just answer any further questions. We've talked about this for a couple of weeks in a row now. Effectively, this is the stub streets that I pulled from the improvement projects this year because of the half million dollars that we were requesting above and beyond what the council had previously approved for bond funding. And so I will answer any questions you may have on these particular projects. My recommendation further, actually, before I open it up for questions, would be to continue to postpone this project until next year, thereby expanding the scope and extending these streets, either two or all four of them, to Benson and Highway 12, respectively.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. I know when we were preparing for tonight's meeting, we had talked about the timeframes. And I'm just wondering if you'd walk through the timeframes, because the concern that I expressed, I, it's frustrating that this project was removed, but it, it has been. And so the concern that I have now is our ability that if we said do it, could it even be done? And I know you've listed some of the timeframes in, in the information here, but I'm just wondering if you'd expand on, what would happen if we agreed or said do this project tonight?
Sure.
What would it look like?
It would look much later than, than the current projects that are, contracts are signed and ready to go on at this point. So as, as I mentioned there, the earliest we could schedule an assessment hearing would be July 16th, because I'd have to send out assessment notices to the affected property owners. They're required by state statute, I believe, two weeks' notice before, before the hearing. At that point, July 3rd is when the bids are set to expire. The contractors were originally asked to hold their bids until, or hold their dollar amounts until July 3rd. So obviously, that would be after that date. And so I would need to contact the contractor and see if they would be willing to extend that hold. In this particular case, I have preemptively contacted the contractor, and he said that they, they would talk about it, but they would most likely be willing to hold that bid. So that shouldn't be as big of an issue. The other thing that came up this morning, actually, I heard from a number of different, from a couple of different people, and I'm still doing some research on it, is that concrete structures are potentially eight to 10 weeks out after contracts are signed to, to get that stuff ordered and on site. So this is delaying the project until, I would say, minimum first August, probably first of September, before they can even start.
Is it easy, feasible to think that it could be done this year, to be completed if you aren't starting till August?
It could be done. It would, it would be late. And what happens is, as evidenced in, in a couple of areas of 16th and 17th Streets Southwest, when, if you get in there too late and have late weather, which obviously we can't plan for, then by next spring, there's some pretty good holes to, to fix and repair before you, before you can put that final wear course on, and the residents, you know, live with those holes through the winter.
Councilmember Osmus.
I don't know if I'm missing something, but if you're looking at expanding this and keeping with, and connecting it with, with Highway 12 and Becker Avenue and expanding it for next year, and we kind of missed the assessment process that we normally follow, why would we not wait until next year? What, what's, I don't, I'm not understanding, why if we're going to expand on it, and we've already missed the assessment hearing part, why, why don't we just do it next year?
I don't think you're missing a thing. That's exactly what I'm proposing.
I know, but, okay. It makes sense to me.
Is there an appetite to move this forward? I'm not seeing one at this point. Councilmember Nelson.
I, I think there's been a discussion with how we got here. You know, why did they get dropped? How did the contractor know about it before we did? You know, some of those types of things. I'm looking to, you know, I asked, I asked when we, again, when we were preparing, what's staff's recommendation with this? But how do we not have this happen again? Or if we don't do this now, I mean, we're, we're so far behind on streets now. Is there something else we can catch up on this year by using what money there is left? But how do we not have this happen again? And, and the other thing, I don't believe that people have been notified that we're not doing the project yet, have they?
They've been, they've not been notified that there was an assessment hearing.
But they did get an original notification.
For the improvement hearing?
Yes.
Correct. I'll try to answer all those questions. The way you can, we cannot have this happen again is the council can direct me not to design or prepare as my, as many projects in the future. I've made it a habit the last few years of preparing more projects than potentially we can afford to pay for, on purpose. And I do that so that if funding becomes available late in the game, if there's a way to make things happen later, we can potentially make those happen. The, the alternate to that is to not design enough, and then we're sitting here having a conversation that says, how come you didn't design enough projects? We got all this additional money we can pay for streets. But now they can't be prepared in time to, to happen. So to me, it's a little bit of an advantage to prepare more than we can afford to build, because then they are already shelf-ready, shovel-ready, if you will, if you like that term, for next year. And I think that's the, I, I still think that's the way to do it. Again, unless council directs me otherwise, that's what I will probably continue to do in, into the future. As far as why the contractor knew before the council, the contractors are at the bid, and the contractors are calling me and my department days afterwards, what are you going to do? Do you have enough money? Is it going to work? By the time we got the money, or the, the math done on those projects, what was, what was told to the contractors is my recommendation will be to the council to not do those, that particular portion of the project. Obviously, it was, the final decision was up to you at that point. So that's how, that's how they knew before you, potentially.
So the funds that, there weren't enough funds, but the funds, there were more funds than what we're spending this year, correct?
Say that again.
There weren't enough funds to do this last project. That's why you chose not to do it, correct?
There weren't enough bond funds, that's correct.
Bond funds.
Correct.
Okay, so there aren't funds sitting there that we're not spending this year?
That's correct.
Because we only bonded for the other projects?
We bonded for all the projects. And then when the bids came in and we figured out how much the assessments are paying for, the utilities are paying for, the general fund is paying for, when we bond for all those dollars, then we have a number after the bids are in to determine, to match to the approved, pre-approved bond proceeds or bond maximum amount.
There stood that process, but they aren't equal, right? So was there more, I mean, if you subtracted this project off, where were we at with?
We're within $5,000, $10,000 if we subtract this project off. The bond funds were, we were, in round numbers, we were a half million dollars over on bond funds with this project. And this, this project spent around a half million dollars in bond funds. That's why I made this one the easy one to pull.
All right. So that the answer is there aren't funds to do anything else this year?
That's the short answer.
Thank you.
You know, I think what might, just from listening to the conversation that just happened here, what might be advantageous is, I mean, you're knowing that it's probably not going to happen. And so for us to just get an email saying, hey, you know, we're probably going to be pulling some of the streets, you know, we're, we're crunching the numbers right now, rather than wait, because I think it happened during a three-week section between the, my council meetings, rather than wait for the three weeks, just, you know, just a heads up, bids came in higher than we thought they were going to, you know, we may be having to pull some projects. Might have sat a little bit better for some of us sitting on this side of the table.
Right. Yeah, and we, I, I can do that.
I think there's this fear of, well, we can't, we can only send one, one email a week. Well, we can send more than that. I mean, like I said earlier, I think I've got 50 to 70 emails from Matt, you know, just in the last four weeks. So, so I think over-communicating is better than under-communicating.
Okay.
Kathy.
Sorry, Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you. It seems to me this would be a great thing for the weekly update, yeah, to just go into it a little bit more, that this is how the bids came in, and, and then we're not caught off guard. But I can certainly understand how it happened.
Sure.
If, if Mr. Christensen is looking for some direction from us as far as what our desire is in the future, I, I would be inclined to say, let's, let's assume that we'll do all the projects that we have on the slate and go that way. I understand it, it causes some hurt burn for contractors to go through all the work and effort of putting the bids together. And then when their bid is a winning bid, and yet they're not able to do it, that that's a frustration for them, and may be reflected in the price that we're charged the next year because of the time and effort they went into it. So it would be my recommendation that we bid, put out for bid what we think we're going to be able to do.
And if I can add to that, Councilmember Schwantus, Finance Director Okens- And if I can add to that, Councilmember Schwantus, Finance Director Okens and I have talked in the future of significantly increasing the bonding request or recommendation from staff to you in the future.
Thank you.
I'm curious, with the alternatives that are on here, we're in a working session now, does the, a council's inactivity at the actual council meeting, does that just put it to the delay option? Or do we have to have an actual action from the council at the council meeting?
No, the action happened, I believe it was one or two meetings ago, where it didn't move forward, and because it didn't move forward to the assessment hearing, there's no action that we have to take, because the, it wasn't included in the assessment hearing.
We did have a motion the last meeting.
See, I was out, I was not at that meeting. I read the paper, and I thought somebody said, find the money and put the project back in, so I'm curious if we have to do an action at the council meeting.
Dinner minutes.
An inaction is an action, isn't it?
Yeah, okay, so the, I understand Councilmember Meski's question. The council basically directed staff to find the money to put this back in. That was direction to staff, it was not an official action with regards to the 429 process. I don't believe action by the council to formally cancel the project for this year is necessary.
Thank you.
I think what the difference is, is we told them to find the money. They found the money, and they brought it to us, but Mr. Christensen's recommendation is not to use the money that we found for you.
Understand.
And I think that by us not moving the assessment hearing forward, in other words, this dies because it has no support, no legs. Unless you're, Councilmember Christensen, is that where you're at with it?
Did the contractor not want, it was under my impression that they wanted to do the project.
Absolutely.
To fill out their year or whatever.
Yep.
And I know that next year, the costs are going to be more. I mean, it's just inevitable, and with tariffs going on, it's affecting lots of different materials. That's why I suggested we should move the thing forward, regardless of the weather in August and September. I mean, it wouldn't start though, probably August, but it's four stub streets, and I suspect they do them all at one time, tear them out, do the work, put it back in again. I'm under the impression we should do it, but it doesn't sound like the rest of the council is, so whatever the council desires is fine with me, I guess.
You're exactly right, Mr. Christensen. The contractor, of course, would propose or would suggest that you move forward to do it, because as Mrs.
They would honor their.
I did talk to, I did talk to them, and they said they would honor it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the terraplane stormwater. Mr. Christensen, you want to introduce this?
I'll introduce, Mr. Christensen.
You.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Sean has put together the, as you saw in our packet here, the amount, which is a lot more than what I thought it would, we were talking about. I see that it's $375,000, I've been wondering where that came from. I don't think we were talking that amount of money, the conversation you and Dan had or even at the last meeting. What justified that amount of money? I mean, what did we do wrong?
Well, we didn't do anything wrong, Mr. Christensen. What we did was, the numbers we were talking about before was construction only, and so by the time you add, as noted there, under the Financial Impact Paragraph, construction, engineering easements and contingencies, given us a worst-case scenario, I'm hoping a worst-case scenario by providing that number.
And this was for the directional boring?
Correct.
This is not going into the ditch?
It is going into the ditch, but what I did was take the dollar amount, based on our conversation, and do the directional drilling, in hopes also of open cutting a portion of that and reducing that dollar amount significantly.
Across the golf course?
Yep.
So this included directional boring through the golf course?
Right.
Worst-case scenario?
Right.
Okay. Well, it needs to be done, and as far as funding, I'm for the city paying for it, it's a city problem. We need to clean up our stormwater, and I don't know where the conversation goes from here, but the council needs to make a decision on this. It's, we're in this rainy season, and we've had our biggest rains in August, and that's coming up in a couple of months. What does the council wish to do?
I'll just agree with you 100%. I mean, this needs to get done, and we need to do it tonight. I mean, you guys sat in this very, well, downstairs, but in this very building last week, and we were at a crisis. I mean, we had storms coming, we didn't know how much we were going to get. You know, up at my cabin last night, night before last, I mean, they washed out roads again. I mean, it happens. And, and we have a potential solution here, in talking with Mr. Christensen, our city engineer, he feels this will solve our problem, in that one isolated area. But it's doing something, and we haven't done anything in that area before, so.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Thank you, Sean. I noticed some other information that came back to us, and first of all, before we get into all that, I agree, it has to be done, 100%, it has to be done. We cannot have an area in town that continuously floods structures and does property damage. That's ridiculous. So we got to come up with a plan, but kind of where we got stuck before is financing it, and we have to make sure that we finance it well, as leaders, in responsible fashion. So in, in looking at some of the attachments to this, to our notes here, I noticed that we have a couple of documents dating back to 2007, 2008, and I'm wondering if our city engineer would be willing to make any comments on a couple of these documents, in terms of maybe key points, in terms of project process? And I guess I noted a couple of things myself, but I don't want to jump the gun in being presumptuous, so I'm just wondering, are there any things pointed out in here that you would consider somewhat paramount or evidential in terms of how we may have averted this, or, you know, maybe kind of change this situation from the get-go?
You know, there are a couple of comments that I'd make, and I've made it a couple of different times, and this is where some of the, well, significant amount of the disagreement comes in the things I'm about to say. This particular pond, when it was originally constructed, was designed as a dry pond. It says right in the documentation on that, on that first letter from '07. One of the next pages on your, on your attachments indicates an as-built set of plans, where the developer at the time said, I don't want it to be a dry pond, I want it to be a wet pond, remove the under-drain, thereby creating a dry pond, from that project. And that's exactly how it was built. It was built as a, built as a wet pond, designed and approved as a dry pond. So therein lies the initial issue with this, with the project. The drainage designed for this initial development was a 15-inch pipe in Highway 12, and it was sufficient to drain it as originally designed. I don't know if it was re-engineered after it was determined to do a wet pond, because that was during the construction, and so engineering is done by that point. After that point, the city extended that 15-inch line in the highway, right-of-way ditch, to drain a couple, some other streets. Okay, so we, the city, extended that system into, into further development.
And just, and so water then, when we, when you say we extended it, that means more water going into that pond?
No, more water going into the outlet pipe.
Okay.
But when the outlet pipe fills, the pond cannot drain.
Okay.
So when water enters that pipe ahead of the development, then the pond will not drain.
Sure, okay.
Beyond that, there was the last phase of that project, when we were adding more houses, and I know this comment, conversation and comment has come up before, too. There was, there was conversation at my office that said the center area, the common area between the houses needed to be, needed to be lower to help alleviate some of the drainage. That, the ultimate construction on that was actually higher than the houses around it, or that surrounded. So there are quite a few issues contributing to this current problem.
Can I get clarified again? So when you say.
Let's stay with Andrew, let Andrew follow, and then you can follow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, to put it in simple terms, is it your opinion that had the French drain not been eliminated from the original plan set, that the pond would have sufficient capacity to take on this stormwater?
Yes. And I believe that to be the case, because prior to large storms, the pond is pumped down in elevation.
And was that, that same thought was reiterated by the comments in the letter from Bolton Mink?
Correct. Well, I haven't reread that letter recently, but I guess I don't know that. I think their task in 2011, or 13, rather, was to design an outfall to alleviate the flooding.
Okay, but they did thoroughly analyze and provide evidence, per Jared Vogie's comments, that there was not sufficient capacity for back-to-back 100-year.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, that ends my.
Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood, so would, it would be the developers that built the houses, they were told to have the, their lawn areas lower, but they actually built them higher?
That's correct.
And who were those developers? I mean, is that all Kuzman property, or is that other builders?
Originally, that was Kuzman property.
Then the other clarification I needed with those other, going back to the 2007 and 8, and also 2013, with the Highway 12, we were, we were given the opportunity to do something with the Highway 12. Did we, did we, the way I'm understanding it, I just want that spelled out clearly, we declined to either, what, expand the pipe or to do something different?
No, the way that happened was, we were on board to do an expansion of that pipe when MnDOT expanded the highway through there. MnDOT, when they constructed, did not construct that far, so the construction did not happen, therefore, we didn't have the opportunity to do a standalone project.
Okay.
Or didn't take the opportunity, rather. I mean, we could have done a standalone project, we were going to do it in conjunction with highway project.
Got it.
In all fairness, Mr. Kuzman is here, and I think we need to hear from Dan. He may have different thoughts, from what we've been hearing, too. I think, Dan, you wanted to speak to this, too?
Can I ask Sean just one question?
Sure, go ahead.
So if the Highway 12 project had been that, would we have, would we have paid for that cost when Highway 12 was done?
I assume. I don't know, I didn't read that agreement, or that lack of agreement at this point, but I don't, I don't know how the cooperative agreement was set up with MnDOT.
Okay.
That was before Sean was here, and actually, I remember that they, we, the city, said, when Highway 12 project is there, we're going to put in a bigger pipe, 30-inch, I think that they were talking about, if I'm not mistaken, and we didn't do it, and I don't know why. I don't know why, but.
So the answer is yes.
Yep.
Go ahead, Dan, if you want to.
Mayor and members of the council, a couple of things. First of all, and whether it's a wet pond or dry pond, the difference in volume that that holds is the difference, if you can imagine, let's say it's a dry pond, and we have a, between an inch and an inch and a half of rain, that pond will, at that point, fill up and start running out the drain tile, okay? At an inch to inch and a half rain, at that point, the water is still not coming back into the pond. So we are getting the drainage out, period. If, if it was a dry pond, that's what's happening, is the first inch, between inch, inch and a half, depending upon how fast it's coming, will then make it at the same position as a wet pond. What ends up happening at that point is the water reversing in the pipe is our problem. The water that's coming from other properties, other than ours, is what floods us. Without question, and we've been out there, we see it continuously, like six to seven times a season, of the water coming through a 12-inch pipe, coming at us, going into our detention pond. It's not our water, it's city water. If we had a way even of shutting that outlet off, when the water reverses, there is no way that we'd ever flood, period. It's the water from the other properties that is coming in, period. Believe me, between Chad and myself, we've been out there many, many, many times. Over the last 17 years, I have bought this to the attention of every city engineer that we've had. They continued to promise to me that when Highway 12 was reconstructed, they knew a larger pipe had to go in. When it came to that point, for some reason, and don't ask me why, the only problem I had is I was in Arizona, when that went through, is the pipe, the city just said, at this time, we can't do it. That is exactly what happened. I think the most important thing to remember is, wet pond, dry pond, believe me, I've met with a few other engineers since last week, it would not make a difference, period. The flooding, which Sean said this last week, when we were flooding again, you aren't, it came out to the point, we said, we're taking on city water again, and he said, no, you're not, it's not coming in. Baloney. It's very visible. Go look at the color of it, you could see the change in color of what was happening. We know, and you look in the pipe, and it's gushing in a 12-inch stream. If this last week, again, we had not been fortunate enough, and somebody else on our side, to not let the storm come as radar was showing, we would have flooded. We would have flooded again. We tried preventing that, we had a three-inch pump, a two-inch and a, two, three-inch and a two-inch pump out. We were calling frantically for help. What would have helped is this, a pump from the city. We were told that there won't be a precedent set, going to a private pond and pumping water out. My son made the comment, well, it's not our water, get your water out of our pond then. And he said, it wasn't our water. I'll guarantee, as sure as I'm standing here, it was, I'll guarantee that. Our next option shortly, because we're sick of this, is maybe just plug the whole pipe and don't have any drainage out. And when the storm is over, we'll, then we'll take our pumps and pump it into storm sewer. That is really a poor way to go. This thing also about having a ditch or a reservation area put behind the last houses that were built there. If that was the case, I don't recall, but if it was, the help that that would have given would be very, very minimal, because again, it's the water, not from our properties, not even from all the storm sewers and the streets that drain into that pond around us, not any of that. None of what's supposed to go in there is our problem, or causing the flood. It is what is coming from other properties that is backflowing. If you can imagine, the pipe is supposed to go this way, the water flow is supposed to go that way. After between an inch and an inch and a half of rain, depending upon how fast it's coming, it reverses and comes back at us in a 12-inch funnel. There is no capacity that would prevent a flood. With this last week, if we would have had another inch and a half to two inches of rain, we would have been flooded again. We've been flooded many times, we're kind of getting used to it. But I'm also getting sick of taking city water and being responsible to put it where it belongs. and being responsible to put it where it belongs.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Well, it's up to us to make a decision. We know it needs to be done, folks, is financing it.
And when this original pipe was put in and designed, it was approved by the city. Keep that in mind. We did approve it. It was approved to keep up with the water at that time. And since then, a lot has been built out there. And like you said, a lot of this city water is going into those catch basins. And it comes in fast enough, it backs up and floods that area. What do we wish to do? Pass something on to the council? Discuss it there, how we finance it? Or, go ahead, Audrey.
I think it's kind of frustrating, because I think we're still at the same place we kind of ended last week. I'm hearing, I'm hearing information. I think we all agreed this needed to be done. I guess the concern I have is, should the city pick up the entire tab? Who's going to, what other properties are going to benefit from this? Are we setting a precedence for other areas where flooding is going on? The price tag went up substantially from last week to this week. And, you know, with that. So I'm still, I know this project needs to be done. I'm just not sure that the city should be picking up the $375,000 tab.
Remember, that's an estimate. And it could be less if we could open cut on the golf course side. If we just get underneath the road through that one property that doesn't have an easement, an open cut, it's going to cost a lot less money.
Well, last week, the figures were $100,000 less. And so do we have the correct figures? Are we ready to do this? I, you know, yeah, it needs to be done. But who's going to be asking to have the next project done? And are we going to pick up the tab for that one?
We have flooding in Wilmer, several places.
I can agree.
Stormwater. And we have not got off the dime for, I don't know how many years. I'm tired of it. I just, we need to do something. And it's the city. We all pay property taxes to handle stormwater, sewer water, domestic water, keep the streets clean. We all pay property taxes for that. And Mr. Kuzman's paid oodles of taxes on the property out there to keep the stormwater from, you know, backing up into his pond and causing damage. I mean, we need to do something. We have, we had a storm on our tax force. We got some money set aside, I think $100,000 for next year. We don't have enough to do this, but we do have monies. We asked Mr. Okens. I'm sure we can find the money to do this project. And I don't think it's going to come in at this toll, but...
Can I just ask one more question? Who else, who, what other properties will benefit if the city picks up the tab for this?
Well, you can see on the map there, on your folder, a number of them that would benefit. There's a number of all the benefit properties along Highway 12 would benefit to some extent. The problem is determining to what extent. And what I mean by that is, some of those properties were built under current stormwater policy, in which they have maintained their own property or drainage on site. And so it will need to be determined on a per-property basis, which, how much percentage would be responsible or benefit for this improvement? Which is why, in fact, I removed that as an option, because of the time involved in figuring that exact amount and the public hearings involved in, it would be an assessment-type situation.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. When we were talking about adding the stub streets and onto this year's project, one of the financing options was the PIR, the Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund. Could you talk about that fund and how it works? And what the process would be?
Short answer, no. That's a, I don't try to dabble into Mr. Okens' information. What he has told me previous is that that fund is available. It's, as the name indicates or signifies, it's a revolving line of credit that needs to be paid back. And so money could be pulled out of that fund, dropping the, I assume, previously approved ceiling, if you will. And at that point, next year, those funds, whatever funds are used out of that would have to be bonded for or otherwise repaid to some, to that account.
Go ahead.
Yeah, he's got it pretty correct. The PIR has to be paid back over five years. You have five years to pay it back. But the recommendation, I think, that he was making is to pay it back in one year. But the council policy is that you have five years to pay it back.
We use some of that for the auditorium.
We've, yeah, when I was fire chief, we used to buy airbags. We'd use it for a number of different things.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I think a key that I was not aware of is that these are internal funds. So we are really lending them to ourselves. It's a reserve fund, and we're required to pay it back. But that would be a source of funds for this particular project.
That's correct. And I didn't put that on there under, I put the options under Financial Impact, but that's absolutely right. That would be an option to fund that.
The question was asked, who would benefit from this? And is the city's going to benefit from it? We all are. We won't have somebody come up here saying that it's, they're flooding again. And technically, if it floods again, he can ask for all the property taxes to be reduced. Who wants to have a flooded lower level? I mean, so the whole city's going to benefit. And I mean, we did something over in 10th and Candy, Ohio. We took a house out, put a little detention pond in there. You know, we didn't have, is that a precedence? If there's trouble, we need to fix it, folks. Go ahead, Julie, and then let's send it on to them.
I understand that. But I think we also, we're also in a position to have to look at the taxpayers' money for the future and the precedent. And I know, let's say, where another council member lives, the developer was supposed to put in a, some type of a water retention pond and ran out of money and didn't do it. And now all of those properties are flooding. So then what's the precedent? Then do we go in, are we going to fix that? Because that developer didn't do it. That's my only concern.
I don't know the details of what the one you're speaking of. But if it needs to be fixed, the city should fix it. I mean, this is our city. They all pay property taxes to keep them from flooding. And like I stated earlier, but I suspect we should send this on to the council next council meeting, make a decision. Either, pardon me?
Want to vote on it, to move forward? I think you have support.
We can't vote on it.
During, not now, no.
We can vote to move it forward. We changed that in our process.
I don't think we have ever changed that you don't take formal motions and vote in the work session. I think you...
We talked about it, but didn't do it.
I don't think so. I think you can, again, get consensus.
It's a court or two when we need to, I mean, is there a consensus that we should bring it up at the council meeting? And yes, no, I, I've lived, I mean, there is.
Yep.
Okay.
Sean?
Well, we almost, this is almost playing out as if it's sort of some type of a court of law, which it is not. When you have one side, we're hearing from our engineer and saying tile elimination during a pond construction versus elevation of properties versus, and then you hear the property owner talking about a 15-inch pipe as responsible. And neither one necessarily sees the other as any fault. Makes it very, very difficult for the council. And so it is a problem. Everybody recognizes that. Is there an ability, before it comes back to the council, that we try to see if there's a meeting of the minds? And I'm sure you've done this before. But if we could say, "We're cognizant of the issue, and it seems, from what we're presented, that there are two vastly different explanations of what's happening." Is there a meeting of the minds that can alleviate having to make such a radical choice here as if we're some type of a court? Otherwise, perhaps it would be settled somewhere like that. Is there another, can we make another attempt before it comes back to a council to see if there is any meetings of the minds? Because it seems to me that, I can't get an answer, and I don't want to hire another engineer to take a look at this. And so, I don't know, because I'm finding myself unable, because there's, there are two polar opposite explanations.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, I think this is a prime example of why we, as a council, have to address this one. This issue's been there for over 20 years. It's compounded. We know the water. I mean, I've been there. I've been standing beside Dan, and I've watched it happen. I remember my, my stepmother was living in one of the units and flooded out her apartment. Right, Dan? And, I mean, so we know there's a problem. And, you know, I can blame you, you can blame Ron, Ron can blame me. It doesn't make the problem go away. So we're at the point where we got to fix the problem. And I agree with what Councilmember Schronter said earlier, is that we need to start addressing some of these issues. And Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Christensen said the same thing. You know, some of this is just, I mean, we have to do it. I mean, it has to get done. So it doesn't make any difference who we blame. It has to get done.
Sure, step up, just quick.
Okay, very quick.
Put the mic, though, please. Put the mic, though, Dan.
The item to remember is, if the city kept their water from coming into our pond, we wouldn't have a problem. That's the best way of putting it. And remember that. And I can prove that. And that's fact. If we didn't have the backflow, we would not flood, period. And that water is coming from other places, not from our property around us.
That's $9,000.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a lot.
I suggest we move on to the next item.
Okay, with council permission, I'd like to move. Bruce, how long is the airport entitlement going to take?
Three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council...
Dan, could you stick around for just a second?
The City of Wilmer received a request from our consultant engineer, Boltman Mink, to lend our entitlement money to the City of Painesville Airport for a one-year time period. The practice is pretty common. And because we don't have any construction projects on our CIP for this year for the airport, this $150,000 would just be sitting in a non-interest-bearing account with the federal government and administered by MnDOT. So it makes sense to do this. There are two parts to it, and that is to execute the formal request and then also the repayment agreement. Under the terms of this agreement, the city would be repaid next year, the full amount of $150,000 by the City of Painesville from their entitlement dollars. And so it's a recommendation of staff that this be moved to the full council for discussion and action on the resolution.
Is there any opposition to that from council? Okay, we're adjourned from the work session.